My love, we lead the United States of America. And to the Republic of the religious sands, one nation, another land, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please chat have our roll call? Pardon me? Here.
Here.
Here. We had our, one of our esteemed members, Mayor Friel's resigned from the committee, I guess, at the Tuesday city council meeting. So hopefully at the next city council meeting, they would take up a replacement appointment from amongst council members.
Can I say something about that as far as the resignation?
Ah. Why don't we call that public comment? Sure.
Okay. I, I'd just like to know why we didn't get some kind of official statement from the person? And why that person can't be here today to do that for, for, I would think that would be the proper thing to do. I'm disappointed that it happened the way it did. For the record.
Okay. Thank you, David. Do we have any other public comments?
Well, just to follow up on what David said, but what if a question, was there any indication as to why he no longer wanted to be on the committee, Don?
In a discussion with he and the city attorney last week, he continues to be concerned about what he feels is at least the perception of violation of the Brown Act when, when Chair March Roma discussed the proposed SOI sphere of influence with different members of the board of supervisors. And he asked the city attorney to look into that. The city attorney found no evidence that there was a Brown Act violation. I interviewed the mayor because at one meeting, the mayor was there temporarily, but then she left. Mayor Jordan at the time, and, and he didn't really care about the attorney's findings and, and and didn't want to be part of what he perceived to be misbehavior in accordance with the Brown Act, so.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. That helps.
I also have a public comment. I just agree with, with committee member Madero stated that at least a writing, a really formal, you know, resignation would be in order. It's, it's just the, I think it's the perception. His concerns were perception. Well, I think we need formality.
True. Okay. Any other public comment?
But sure, I wanted to introduce to you again Jennifer Stevenson from Lasco is joining us today. We have our Zane Mortensen from EMC to talk about the work he's doing and John Giffen, our city attorney who drafted the MOU.
Welcome all.
And we have Chad.
Hi Chad.
Filling in, filling in and supporting our city clerk's office today. Thanks for joining us, Chad. Appreciate it.
Okay, again, I see no public comment. No additional public comment. Consent. Uh, we're going to, looks like we do not have with the absence of our clerk, the minutes from the April meeting, so uh, should we table that?
Sure.
Second, let me move the, the.
Second.
Yes, sorry.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I. Just, just as a footnote, I can't, I would have seen from the minutes of April 23 anyway, so.
No worries.
You three can vote. So after the post name left. I would move to, I would move to approve the update for the posting.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
I.
I. I.
All opposed? No, we're all unanimous. Okay. Uh, review and discuss. So item number four memorandum of understanding between the county San Benito and the city San Juan Batista regarding development in the planning area. The report from the city manager looks like.
Um, yeah, thanks. And John will help me with this. And this is one of the reasons I asked Jennifer to be here today is because um, in, in speaking with the, the mayor wheels about the process. He asked me why we couldn't just submit the resolution and the map to LAFCO for approval. And I, and maybe I'm confused, but I thought Zane's work with the general plan amendment was related and was to be submitted with the application. Or are they separate items as well? And so I, I asked Jennifer, just so that we were all on the same page in terms of process. Because I'm starting to get confused. Maybe too much time has passed, but I thought they were related. I thought, I thought the, the, the report to show that we could at least meet arena needs was important to submit to ACV. Uh, maybe they're not together, maybe they're separate items. Um, but then also as, as we presented our proposed SOI. It was Jennifer believed who thought that we should have the MOU worked out with the county before we attempt to change our SOI because we want to make sure that we have a good agreement for those properties surrounding the cities. So, so the MOU is important work and we are on the right path and we do want to get that to the council, maybe after today's meeting. So they're, they're all kind of connected.
Okay, so, okay, so there was some reservation about, about submitting the SOI, but well, in Jennifer's case, Jennifer, you said that the one of the next steps was to do the municipal services review.
And that's budgeted, I believe, July 1, so she can speak to that. Maybe we get her application in before July 1. Well, I'll let Jennifer talk.
Yeah, Jennifer, what would you like to see? Or how, how do we best serve your, your needs as well?
I, I do think the general plan amendment would be necessary to inform both the MSR and the sphere of influence update. Um, yes, it's correct. The MSR is funded from July 1. And we already have quite a bit of information from the city, so we can get immediately started on that next phase to fill in the other services for the MSR. But the MSR will also be necessary for the sphere of influence update. So an application doesn't need to be in to LAFCO until we're closer to adopting that MSR.
Okay, okay.
Makes sense.
Is there a timeframe for the general plan amendment?
Uh, we can let Zane speak to that. It sounds like we're on a final draft.
Good afternoon. Yeah, that is correct. We do have a draft targeted general plan amendment. Uh, that has been prepared. It's going through internal staff review as we speak. Uh, we are currently working with the city graphics developer Renee on preparing some of the revised maps and images for that to um, accounts for some of those old maps and graphics that show the larger sphere of influences. Um, but really, one of the things that we are working on, um, or trying to coordinate is the city is currently going through its housing element update. Um, we spoke to the gentleman doing that a few weeks ago, Isaac George, I believe it's his name. And we really just want to make sure that whatever policies put forth in the housing element update are consistent with the policies we're writing for the rest of the general plan amendment. Because of course, infill development and the amount of units and where you're going to put them really align. So we want to make sure that our policies in those two documents speak to each other and are consistent.
And, and to that end, we received a final draft and, and are submitting it to ACV today of the housing element. And we'll have a review of the status of the housing element at Tuesday's planning commission meeting. It's not a formal hearing to adopt it, but just let the commission and the new commissioners in particular know, know where we're headed.
Perfect. And so, okay, so it sounds like that's pretty close to coming together.
Yeah, it's moving forward as well.
Okay, and so are, are, what else, what do you need from us, from this committee to move this forward at this point? Yeah.
Well, I think our main focus is to get an update from, from Zane on the general plan amendment, uh, which we sort of had, but also to get this MOU and bring this MOU forward to the city council.
Okay.
Um, and then I have some pretty good notes from my last conversation and John tried to put notes like that into a document that, that that you feel familiar with. I didn't have a quorum last month, so that was opportunity to bring it forward. So I'd like to continue that business and get it done today.
Great, great. Um, okay. Um, so do we have anything else from Jennifer or Zane at this point?
At this point, no, we still got our graphing.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, it's, it's going through its last little bit of review. Once we see that updated housing element, we can make sure that the, the policies align and then it'll go for city staff and internal review. And input.
Thank you. Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
Uh, nothing else for me at this time, unless you have any other questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we want to jump into that, the document? The MOU itself? Um, I don't know, John, do you have any comments that you'd like to make as we start out or?
Remind us what we were doing? I would just say that, you know, it certainly is a work in progress. The initial two meetings ago, uh, you know, you, I, you asked for bullet points and we kind of gave you a very straightforward bullet point type of memo. And then you asked for more context and so we put the context back in and I'm certainly willing to hear the committee as to whether we accomplished our goal there. Um, I, I can see in reading it, you, you had asked not to have colors, but to have letters or numbers and I, we accomplished half of that goal, I can see. Uh, in the, in the purpose, um, paragraph, we did not change our uh, our, our colors to number, to letters rather, sorry. So I've, I've just done that manually here and just open for any, any particular comments. At this point.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, sorry, I'm making a couple notes. Let's see, so. Okay, I think I'm gonna bring it back to the committee and go around and see if we have questions or comments. Um, David, do you want to start?
No real questions or comments. I, I went through it and well, I guess I do have a comment. Uh, on, on the first section, whereas establishment of a planning area within the city of San Juan Batista legislative control and influence is vital to the protection of the historical character and setting of the city, which underpins the city's cultural, economic wellbeing and community values. And I, I still feel comfortable, would feel a lot better if we say some kind of statement that brings into uh, view on this document about our rural heritage uh, for the county itself, kind of a thing. Uh, that kind of verbiage, again, um, our rural heritage, which is quite different and unique than most of the counties here in the state of California. Um, I wonder if that should be defined.
Okay.
And, and express more, more completely, you might say on the, on the MOU or.
Okay, thank you, David.
You're welcome.
I like that.
And I mean, David, that was, that's, so you have. It looks okay, otherwise not, looks good?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Jackie, do you?
Uh, I have a question in regards to the gentleman that's working on the amendment. He said he's waiting for the housing element. Is that, is that what he said?
Yes.
Okay, so I feel like that ties into our infill work. So can you address, isn't that information that would also help you amend the general plan where we hired EMC to do that, correct, Don?
Yes.
Now, that, that is correct. Um, the general plan is a targeted general plan amendment that focuses specifically on amendments to support infill development. And so you're absolutely rightly saying that the housing information in the housing element should tie into the policies that we're implementing in the rest of the general plan update. And also really communicate and speak to each other in a way that they don't contradict or impede one policy from being implemented.
And have you had any communication so far at this juncture with EMC in regards to whether or not that is gonna coincide and we're not contradicting each other and it's not more work?
Yeah, so I, I, I'm with EMC. Um, and yes, we were able to meet with Isaac George, who is with the other other consultant that is putting together the housing element. And so we have communicated with them. We've got an idea of the policies that are in place. But since the housing element has not been finalized and is kind of in the process of um, uh, going through ACV approval on the policies and recommended recommendations within that plan, we're kind of waiting until that's finalized to review the document and make sure that our policies that we're recommending are consistent.
Okay, and then I have another question. Um, on the first page of the document, page one, about halfway down the page where it's the last whereas uh, whereas the city's general plan encourages urban growth boundaries that one successfully limits sprawl. But do not, this is a part where I'm kind of a little confused or just wondering why that's worded that way. I don't think we spoke about price, uh, market prices, but it says, but do not restrict development to avoid home price increases. Uh, so I'm kind of confused as to why that was put in there. What does that all translate into us? From my perspective of just trying to limit and preserve our boundaries and like David said, Mr. Maderos, you know, preserving our ag, um, you know, our ruralness. So then we throw in, which seems sort of reference to real estate, home price increases. I don't quite understand that in this document. Um, and then it says promote new growth in desirable areas. Uh, what are those desirable areas? And protect prime, that's pretty, that's pretty obvious. Protect prime ag lands and view sheds and discourage some subdivisions of parcels and ag production. It's that second sentence, uh, part of it, but do not restrict development to avoid home price increases, promote new growth in desirable areas, where?
So I, I, um, I'm, we should defer to John, but I'm guessing that this was lifted almost directly out of the general plan.
That is exactly correct.
Yeah, so this is, these are the, this is what it, in, in the general plan, when it talks about the purposes of the urban growth boundary is described in the general plan. These are some of the considerations or these are the considerations that would, that are, that would apply to the development of the urban growth boundary. Is that correct, huh?
That is right. Now, that's what, also what this whole process is about and we don't have to absolutely uh, mirror the general plan, plan language, but that's where, that's the source of it. So, um, we can tailor it to the extent you wish to, so long as it's accurate and has integrity.
I guess I like to wait and hear when anyone else is, I mean, I understand. It's right there in this sentence. I just don't recall us talking about home prices and whatnot.
No, I, I don't believe it's been a topic of discussion here. I think, like I say, he's just, he's lifting it.
I have a, I have a comment on that, but I'll, I'll wait till I go through all my stuff.
Okay. Do you, anything else, Jackie? That's, otherwise looks okay. Okay, thank you. Dan, you want to?
Sure. Uh, John, I went through this pretty carefully and made some notes. Um, let me say overall that I thought you just did a phenomenal job on this thing. I mean, it's really, really good. And you captured, you captured a lot, if not all of the, the sentiment and the prior discussions and deliberations of this committee and, and, and otherwise. Okay, so here, here are my comments. First, the Land Conservation Act, the LCA program. I was on the county planning commission for 14 years and I have no idea what the LCA is. So I was wondering if there might be an opportunity for, um, Elizabeth Soto or, or someone to grab a hold of that and maybe email it to all the committee members just to take a look, just out of curiosity, because, yeah, that's all it is, is curiosity. By the name of it, it, it's, it sounds great, Land Conservation Act. Well, I'm all about that, but I'd just like to see what that program is and learn more about it.
Fair enough.
Uh, next paragraph. Yeah.
May I interrupt you?
No, no, how dare you?
I, I wondered if John could give us maybe just a brief summary of what that is.
I, you know, that was, that was also borrowed language and I, I'm sorry, I, I unfortunately, I, I, I don't know right off the top, but it's, it's county administered.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, yeah.
Maybe you can familiarize yourself with that right alongside us.
Yeah, yes.
That's, that's just fine.
So, so commissioner, um, committee member, um, I do recall Ariel Goodspeed from the county talking about their need to do that. There's a legal requirement to set that aside, to set aside, uh, uh, land and, and for that reason, we, we got a feeling that our, that our intentions were consistent with county intentions. I don't know if they're.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think they went like this and I remember Ariel mentioning something about that too. I don't know that she used Land Conservation Act. Maybe she did. I just, and I've forgotten. I don't know. Okay, so next, um, next paragraph, whereas, um, the city of San Juan Batista has legislative control and influence, dot, dot, dot. I kind of honed in on that word control and thought, oof, I don't know how the county's gonna take that. Because we don't control land that's not ours. We control what's within our jurisdictional limit. But if it's county land, well, county controls. But as, and I mentioned this to Chris, um, and he said, well, let's just see if it flies, see if they push back on it. I thought, well, what the heck, let her rip, but just wanted to kind of flag that.
It's, it's an aggressive statement, but I, I don't, I don't, I agree with you. I think we ought to give it a try and see if we get pushback.
You bet. Let her rip. Um, the paragraph that both David and Jackie were talking about, whereas the city's general plan, dot, dot, dot. I like David's comment about rural heritage. Jackie, as regards the home price thing, um, I agree, we never, we never really talked about that, but I think that it serves a purpose in that I'm imagining it's anticipatory of some things that we might hear by way of pushback. Well, if you do that, then house, home prices are gonna go through the roof, you know, and no one's gonna be able to afford to live in San Juan and, you know, that kind of thing. So I think it does anticipate that opposition and therefore might serve a purpose. Is, that's my two cents. Um, one thing that I was wondering though, John, is whether you might add to that list of little I, little I, I, little I, 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 um, something along the lines of encouraging infill development.
I'm sorry, I missed that, Dan.
Encouraging infill.
Okay.
The city's general plan encourages urban growth boundaries that successfully limits sprawl. But do not restrict development to avoid home price increases. Successfully limits sprawl, maybe comma. Encourages infill comma, but do not restrict. Maybe just insert that somewhere where it makes sense. But I think that we are all about encouraging infill. We're not saying no development. We're just saying, or no, no new home construction. We're just saying within this area. I think that needs to be made pretty clear. That's right. That's right. Um, next on paragraph two, there's a reference to exhibit A. And just curious, it wasn't attached, so just curious to take a look at, see what, what exhibit A looks like. Um, this MOU isn't, okay, I'm sorry, this paragraph from my own, um, number two, purpose. On page two. This MOU is intended to evolve into an ordinance and or agreement between the parties that explicitly replaces and supersedes the MOU. So we, we all know what an ordinance would be and I'm assuming it would be kind of bilateral. City does one and county does their own ordinance. Query whether that would be difficult to coax the county into creating a county ordinance. I mean, one thing I'm imagining they might say is, we don't have the funding for that, you know, because their county council now is farmed out to affirm in Reading. And I don't know if they charge extra. I don't know, I don't know the scope of their contract, but you know, do, oh yeah, we, we can make an, an uh, an ordinance. It's gonna cost $25,000. I, I know the county is pretty cost conscious right now. But since this MOU under the next paragraph term stays in force and in fact, until something like that happens, then no harm to the fella, I don't think. Just and, and of course, on our end, we wouldn't have much of a difficulty creating an ordinance, but I'm just a little bit, um, suspicious, not suspicious is the wrong, doubtful maybe about whether they can, regarding the county's willingness to create a new county ordinance. Maybe they will, who knows? As Chris said, when he and I were talking about this, well, if they agree to the MOU, why would they have heartburn over creating an ordinance that basically says the same thing? And that's, that was an excellent point. Um, on the agreement part of it. John, my, my view of this MOU is that it is an agreement. So I was just curious as to what you were thinking there, like an, an agreement that would supersede an agreement. So a, a more a more detailed contract? Is that what you were thinking?
Well, I, in some ways, this is, this is kind of an agreement to agree. Um, and that, I, I think the MOU contemplates something more in the future.
I see.
My understanding was it was going to be either an ordinance or some type of an agreement with the county.
Okay.
And that's, that's the basis for that.
Am I correct in envisioning that, um, uh, let's say we go to subsequent agreement. The agreement would track and be very similar to the MOU, wouldn't it?
I, I, it would contain a lot of the same ideas and terms, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, um, paragraph five, by the way, I drew a big exclamation point because I thought that was very well done. Five stars, Amazon review. Um, paragraph six, development in the tier B. Um, second sentence, I think. A negative vote from the planning commission with respect to any development proposed within the tier B may be appealed to the city council. But there it kind of stops and although it says the county will provide the final approval, et cetera, query whether it might help to say and a negative result at council may be appealed to the county board of supervisors. Or their planning commissioner. That's an interesting question. Should it go to, would an appeal lie? So it, it goes, it goes to San Juan Planning Commission. They don't like it. They appealed to the San Juan City Council. They don't like it either. Then where does it go?
Does it have to go to the planning commission?
I don't, I don't know.
The, the, the point of having the, the planning commission, the, the, the board of supervisors then becomes the appeals board. If someone wants to appeal the commission's decision, they have that next level.
Well, but I think, I think that's the point. They're, they're appealing already and, and my thought certainly was that it would go to the board of supervisors. I mean, if there's some something in the law that says it can't, that's one thing. But if, I think we'd rather, rather than the person potentially having to go through four.
Four hearings.
I think that, I think that the board of supervisors would, would be the better, better choice.
I'm agnostic on the whole thing, whether it goes to the planning commission or their supervisors or the board of supervisors. Doesn't matter to me.
Anything, anything that would expedite and streamline the decision. Is that the direction you want to go? Yes.
Then it would go straight to the board.
Yeah. So I think the, I think John, the consensus is that it would be the, the board of supervisors.
Okay.
Okay.
But here's, here's my thought on it, guys, is that a negative result that San Juan City Council goes to the county for appeal. And let the county decide whether they wanted to go to their planning commission or their supervisors or whatever, because out of our hands, we, we have our, our, our commission and our council both say they don't like it.
Okay.
Now boot it to the county and if the county wants it to go to their planning commission, have that in.
Okay.
The monkeys are far back.
That seems like a fair point. Rather than us specifying it, they can specify it.
Seems like it's going in the backwards direction because if it goes to the supervisors generally the, the process is it goes to the planning commission first, then to them. So I don't quite understand why it would go back down.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Oh, sorry.
I, I don't understand. I said, it seems like a backward motion. If we, um, we send it to the plant, the board of supervisors and they say, no, we're gonna send it to our planning commission, the county planning commission, isn't that a backwards move?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I can appreciate your point. I think. Yeah, I I I can appreciate your point, I think I think what Dan is suggesting is that. It's really a question for the for the it, we're turning it back over to the county and the county could should decide whether they want it to go. To their planning commission first and then the board of supervisors, rather than us specifying it.
Help them out handle it.
I personally would say, I think we should. Leave it as board of supervisors, and if they object, they can change the language, it's not something that we're gonna get hung up on.
Oh, that's a good thought.
I but I don't feel strongly about it.
Okay.
I don't. Okay, okay.
Well, well, my point for today's purposes was just that it seems like tier B may be approved to the city council period. It just kind of drops off, well. What happens in the event of a negative city count San Juan City Council vote, then what? And and you know, maybe you could insert something, again, even though it says the county will provide the final approval. Which kind of implies that it's gonna go to the county, but you know, could it be more clear, I don't know.
I I think your point's well taken and clarity is definitely a plus, so.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Okay, number seven, de- development in tier C. Um. I won't read the paragraph, but I would submit that it is devoid of. The mechanism by which San Juan, so that's our blue tier, if we can remember that map in our mind's eye. That's the stuff that's furthest away, but still within our planning area, so we still care something about it. And as I recall, our sentiment was, we wanted to. Um, of course, get notice of it. And and I'll get back to that notice thing in a second, and then two. Have a mechanism by which we can say, hey, county planning department, here's what San Juan thinks about that, kind of advisory, you know, like. We took a look at this thing, the same one, and I would say that the same one planning commission should do that work. So it's on a planning commission agenda. We look at what's being proposed. And then we, I think through the chair. And John Giffen prefer prepare a formal submittal to the county. Thank you for letting us know about green acres condominiums. By Union Road. Here's what we have to say about it, very truly yours. Chair of the San Juan Planning Commission, there's it's not, in in other words, paragraph seven doesn't really talk about how San Juan. Could provide input or or would want to, and I think that was the intent, is that we do have want to have something to say about it. And let me get back to the first thing I said, um, notice. In order for San Juan to be able to say something about a proposed project in tier C or blue. We'd have to know a little something about what's being proposed, I mean, if notice could consist of. Ariel calling Don or someone from Fort Lee saying, hey, just wanted to let you know. Prepare the MOU, you're, we are to provide you notice of Green Acres condos is being proposed. Um, thank you very much, see ya, bye and hang up, well. How's how's the same one planning commission gonna? Know anything? They're they're gonna know the sum and extent, the nature and the scope of what's being proposed just by the notice? That's not realistic. That, you know, San Juan Planning Commission would like to know about. The all the typical stuff like number of units and the footprint and um water and sewer and you know, all that stuff, or at least have a sketch. Ideally. For tier C. I and I don't know how this would work timing wise, that's why I say ideally, ideally, it'd be nice if uh the San Juan Planning Commission could get. What would amount to the same packet that the county planning commissioners get. Because those packets tend to be pretty thorough. In describing the project, and therefore would provide the San Juan Planning Commission with. An opportunity to understand a little better. What's being proposed in tier C. Other than that, which might be. Conveyed in the notice process, which I'm assuming would be scant. Maybe I'm maybe I'm assuming wrongly, Dan.
If I could just speak for a second, um, on a on a. On a staff to staff level, we're being noticed right now, we're given copies of applications before they ever get to the. Commission or 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 board of supervisors, so we know almost a day an application comes in. To county planning, uh, what's being applied, what's maps and the whole thing, that's happening now. And Ariel went back, um, after we adopted the resolution and actually put into the county GIS system, our planning area. So that other planners at the county know that if it's within this large circle around our city, to contact us with the application. Whatever gets down the road, and so and they were doing that, as you recall, um, a year or so ago. When I was working on Dassel's project, we actually provided a list of conditions for them to include in the resolution, so we were part of the process.
Oh, that's great.
Part of the approval, David Mack took a hold of that before the other planner was hired and he crafted.
You know, those conditions were in fact incorporated?
They were.
That's fantastic, and I'm I'm so glad that you made that comment, Don, because I forgot all about um information that might be conveyed in the application. Yeah. So. I'm comfortable with having our planning commission weigh in, so to speak. Using just the application information. You know, like I said, it'd be great to get the staffer, the staffer report and the the packet, but but the timing on that would just be untenable, I think.
There's a housing development out by the airport on a piece of land and and we got the application proposal for it and it's like, well, that's, you know, that's that's beyond the pale.
Nobody cares about what happens around the airport.
So I told that formally, I gave them formal feedback, we received this, thank you for the information. We're not interested this time.
Yeah.
There's a rectangle of forty acres out there or forty units, I forget what it was.
Flight path.
I'm not certain. San Juan didn't have a flight path.
Comes with some headphones. Noise cancelling headphones, the good ones, the buzz. Um.
So, um, did did Don's comment alleviate your concern on?
Well, at least.
Paragraph seven?
Well, yeah, yeah, well, let me, let me respond to that.
Think it still needs to some tweaking.
I still think it needs some tweaking, because um it doesn't address the the first thing I said, and that's what I was just gonna say.
Okay.
Um, I think that. The concept of having. A tier C proposed project. Be notified to the city, sounds like that's happening already, that's awesome, and and that spirit of cooperation with the county is just. Cannot be taken for granted. So we get notice of the application, get the application itself. And then it goes on the San Juan Planning Commission agenda. And the San Juan planning commissioners, using the application only. Realizing that it's not a staff report, it's not, you know, it's it's comprehensive or something like that, but using the application only. Says, here's what we have to say about it, formally, through the chair, letter written by the chair and the city attorney to the uh. Um, San Bernardino County Department. And I would love it if our that a letters like that would then be included. In the San Bernardino County Planning Commissioners Packet. So that if I'm a commissioner. For the county as I was, I could see, oh, that's interesting, San Juan is. Very much opposed to this. It's in their tier C, and they don't like it at all. And you know, again, advisory, but couldn't it could move their needle a little bit. But as it sits now, I don't see in paragraph seven. Where it addresses um any of that, how how San Juan would provide feedback on. After getting notice in an in an application, as Don pointed out, okay, and then the rest of it is, you know, applicable of law venue. Separability, interior agreement, all that stuff, which is uh pretty standard. So those are my comments, uh, but again, to reiterate my my initial point, John, I thought you did a just phenomenal job on this thing, I really like it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me see, yeah, I had some a few notes, um, the Land Conservation Act. Program I was can would like to know more about. Um. There's a note under purpose uh toward the end of that works is in which the city would not slow down the county's development process, and I was. Curious why that was included. And.
Say that, say that again, Chris, I'm sorry.
Um, in toward now on on the last.
I see it.
Yeah, I'm just, it says in which the city would not slow down the county's development pro- process, and I was curious. What the purpose of that was.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, can I just jump in on that real fast? Cause I skipped right, I skipped it. I just talked about exhibit A. John, query whether you can't just put a period after a city interest and influence.
Cities interest and influence comma.
No period.
And the third tier involving the least amount of.
No, further down.
Sentence, yeah, uh, three little lies.
Yeah, I.
Year involving the least amount of city interest and influence period.
We can do that.
I mean, why say in which the city would not slow.
Yeah, that's that's it's it's kind of a volunteer, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, I I get it.
Okay, no problem.
That seems like a, okay.
Because I think that if if there's something going on in that tier C blue tier that we hate, yeah, we'd like to slow it down, we'd like to. Not to happen, maybe even, but I don't want to commit to, you know, anything like that, I don't think it's necessary. I see why you did it to try to appease.
Yeah, I think it it does, it just indicates that, of course, we're here to. Cooperate, but I don't think we necessarily need to. Volunteer it.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. In retrospect.
Uh, in, uh. Sure, no problem, paragraph number four, definition of development and structure. Um, I. I unfortunately did not get a chance to look at that code language, but I'm. Um, in in our previous conversations, we've talked about um this covering. You know, building projects, uh zoning changes, you know, land use changes. Uh, and subdivisions. Um, of any kind, and so I don't know if those would be covered within that, those two definitions. And um, so that would be my only concern there.
My my, I don't have the code right in front of me, but my understanding, it it does cover all of that, but I let me let me double check that, yeah.
It does, okay, uh, and that that's great, I'll I'll take a look at that, and if there's anything that jumps out at me as problematic, I'll I'll follow up, but I.
Okay.
I and take you, pick your word for it.
I have it right now on my phone, it's pretty generic, development means on land, in or underwater, the placement and erection of any solid material or structure. As using this section, structure includes, but is not limited to buildings, roads, pipes, flumes, conduits. Nothing in this section shall be construed to subject the approval or disapproval of final subdivision maps to the provision of this chapter, so I think it's just. Kind of generic description of what do we mean by development, what do we mean by structure?
But but does it specifically talk about um land use changes?
No.
Doesn't sound like, okay, so that, okay. Okay, I. Anybody else, does that raise a red flag at all, or are we just, are we comfortable with it being development and structure? I mean, ultimately, I guess that's really what we're. What we're concerned about, I just don't want somebody to feel to start working on a project and start working on land use changes and then figure out later that they're. They're not gonna be able to do. The development or structure, but. Am I overthinking it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think you're issue spotting.
Okay. Does that, does that make sense, Sean?
Yes, it does.
What I'm getting at, okay, so I guess that that would be my feedback, I'm I'm concerned that it is not explicit enough about other types of. Um, issues that would come before the planning commission. Um, ordinarily, we would want those to be covered as well.
Yeah.
Noted.
Okay, um. I think that was all of my notes, um, I would like to go back. To um Jackie's comment. In the last whereas. And see if she had any um. Further thoughts on that, or if you are comfortable with it, or if we really. I I I think it. It feels to me like it's a CYA thing. That we're saying, oh, yeah, we've thought about this, we act, we considered this, and we're saying, this is not, we're we're, you know, we're not. If some, you know, if there's some sort of legal challenge.
Well.
And I think it's covering ourselves by saying that.
But do not restrict development to avoid. Home price increases. So what that means is that we would be in essence saying, we don't want to build fifty homes. Because then if we limit that, then it's gonna increase the price, so not really the.
Can you hit your mic?
Dad said, Dan said something a little bit different than what I was looking at it when I'm reading it. It says, but do not restrict development to avoid home price increases. So now I'm like confusing myself, like. We didn't talk about that, we just talked about. Where the development would go, so by saying too much, are we really kind of putting our necks out there a little bit more? If we were to avoid even mentioning that?
Um.
Maybe I'm just not understanding it.
No, I I I think what we're saying, so it's a successfully limit sprawl, the urban growth, so the the the. Si- the city's general plan encourages an urban growth boundary that. Successfully limit sprawl. But doesn't restrict development to the point that home cry prices are are negatively affected or or radically increased. Because we've we've done that. The reality and and then it goes on to say it promotes new growth in desirable areas. And promotes prime ag land and view sheds and discourages subdivision of parcels and agricultural production. So I, yeah, to me, it's it's all, it's it's sort of saying, we we understand. That restricting growth can have the effect of increasing home prices, but we're not, we're we're not. That's not the purpose of it, we're not trying to, you know, go get rich by not allowing any development to happen and and all of our our. Our home prices go up as a result, is that, Don, am I seeing that?
That, yes, you are.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, are you comfortable with the language then as it is?
I think if it's in the general plan, it must have been thought out.
Okay.
Wasn't discussed before.
I think it's more.
It wasn't discussed before, um, but it was in the general plan, and now we're talking about the general plan, there's also. A whole section that, and I'm gonna throw this out there, you gotta think about it, because we're referencing our general plan. That states that we would develop on the south side of Alameda, are we? Are we aware of that, are we talking about that, is that when one of our triggers, the restriction, right?
That's what, that's what Zane's work is.
Call out the elephant in the room.
Yeah, no, no, that that's being addressed in the in the um. The amendments, the general plan amendments, the housing.
To make sure, because I didn't see this in here, but I'm assuming that that is what's happening, that's what's gonna, that's the end result. That we're addressing, that we no longer are in agreement with that. And and never were.
If I can just add, if I can just add to that, Mr. Chair. Therefore, all the more reason for us to pay very close attention to this amendment. We're gonna have to scrutinize this thing, not not, not anything against Zane or anything, but did he capture the sentiment of this committee?
And our tier.
And right, exactly.
Okay.
Not these tiers.
Okay. Um, John, do you have feel comfortable with the actionables?
I do, yeah, I've taken notes. I think I think I heard everybody and and I'll, if I have any uh questions, um, I don't. Want you guys to talk amongst yourselves, really, but I I'll be happy to reach out to one or or each of you. Um, if I have specific questions about what you've said.
Thank you.
Thank you for the input, it's very helpful.
Tom, can I add something here?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, uh, I, the other thing that I also discovered. While we're going through all this and we were talking about the uh Land Conservation Act and what was that? You know, a lot of times what we when we put into these documents, we need to add a link to it, that says that, hey, when we talk about this stuff. Uh, this is where we're going with it, also, uh, why can't we link our process? It says, the reason why the statement is in here, it it begets the process in which from this point on. If it's appealed or 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 denied, this is where it's going from here and there, as far as even the process. Include that in in a MOU too, that there is a reference. Not only to the general plans, but also to the state, uh, whatever codes that they're might be out there as far as definitions go and what have you. That should be included and linked to. I thought, that's one of the comments I knew I wanted to throw in there.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Don, did you have any, any, uh?
Do you know, I think John, if if the city attorney's clear, I'm clear.
Okay, um. And so, and I I know you wanna, we wanna roll this up, but it sounds like we. Should take. Well, why don't we get a sense of it, are you guys? Comfortable, John, making changes and and moving it forward, or do we want to take a final look at it? Yeah.
Oh. I mean, ideally, on the one hand, it'd be nice to see it. On the other hand, pushing it out another month.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, ugh.
I.
So I'm trying to think, I'm just trying to conjure up a way to short circuit that a little bit, I wish John could could just email it to each one of us.
Is um.
And we could, we could say yea or nay.
Yeah, so John or, well, not necessarily say yea or nay, but but maybe the feedback to John could be, we need another meeting.
Um, does that? Just given the, given the substance of the comments, I I would probably suggest another meeting, but.
Okay. All right. Well. Hold that, hold that thought, David, well, I was gonna say that that I think the next actually, the next item on our agenda is to. Discuss the uh, date and time of the meeting, so.
Could that include a special meeting?
We certainly can, could could do a so a special meeting.
What if? What do you think, John, um, without? Pushing you too hard, what what's a realistic um, timeframe for turning this around? With your workload and everything else you got going on?
Sorry, I didn't hear that, Dan.
What's a realistic estimate for your um, turnaround on something like this and and you know?
Oh, if I get right to it. I can prob, we could probably have it done by the end of the week, uh, I would say, but or maybe very early next, I I, it depends on. If I can get to it right away, it it won't take me too long, it's just a matter of if I can get to it right away.
Okay, that sounds great, so. Uh, when we get to that agenda item, Mr. Chair, maybe we talk about a special meeting in two weeks. Cause it sounds like it's realistic for for John to have that done by then.
Okay.
For us to look at.
Okay.
And that would be the only thing on the agenda presumably, so we can get in and out of here real fast.
Joy. Okay, um, why don't we open it up for public comments, do we have any public comment? Riving stuff that the public is just dying to. Review. I'm missing pizza, by the way, so the quick, quicker we get out of here, the quicker I get my my pizza. What's that? Yeah, we're not, that's our next slide, that's our next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, that was for A. Uh, any additional comments from the council or from the committee? Seeing none, we'll move to. For B, which is EMC infill design update.
Right, I think we got that pretty much.
Covered that within the scope of, okay.
Right, Zane, we're okay with that?
Yeah, and if anyone else has any more questions regarding that?
Okay. So when that comes in, we'll get it out in.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, so again, public comments, seeing none, we will move on to. Item five, action, discuss and approve the day and time change the regular meet, regular meeting schedule. Uh. Certainly.
So I feel it's only right that I speak to it since I asked for this item to be put on the agenda. Um, as you know, I'm back to work full time after being out for eight and a half months. Um, uh, the Tuesday meeting at this time is really interfering with my clinic schedule. And I, you know, even though when I interviewed, I said I'm an elected official. I have some obligations, that, yeah, that will work, when we come to it, we'll deal with it. And then today, I got a little pushback from someone that wasn't in my pay grade or even my boss, and it really irked me. Because I may took pains to discuss and say, you know. Um, this is a one-time deal, we're in the works of perhaps getting it so it doesn't affect my work schedule. And so I had asked last week for Liz to, because I've been thinking about it, how I was gonna approach it, I don't want to resign. I enjoy working with everyone here, it's really important to me, the work that we're doing. So my proposal is to, number one, consider a day change. And my schedule is really whack, I'll just say it right out there, I'm going in today at ten, getting off at seven. Which means that I uh, would not be able to attend this meeting, um. Would Wednesday would be the day. And Wednesdays, I'm there from seven AM until five, so it would have to convene at five thirty. Um, really pushing it, or if I pushed and said, hey, can I leave at four thirty, but down the road, I don't think they'd like that. Um, so if I could just avoid having to leave early at all.
Yeah.
I could uh, be here at five thirty, or if that doesn't work, six, but. I understand that you all want to just get out of here and we want to not have to be here late at night. So I would say Wednesday at five thirty, if that would work for anybody.
Mr. Chair, I'm I'm fine with uh, Wednesdays at five thirty.
David?
Good, no problem, man.
Yeah, I couldn't do it up Tuesday, yeah, you're retired. Permanent vacation.
And you travel.
I know, I know.
So, um, do you want to, how about the um? The second Wednesday?
However it works for you, as long as it's a Wednesday, and that would be the rest of, I mean, any, anything other than that day, that time. I'm good.
Okay.
Whatever you three decide.
That would be what?
The the, well, the 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 planning commission meets on the fourth, so the fifth seems. Uh, and it seems a little crazy to have you guys two meetings in a row.
I thought the planning commission was the first Tuesday.
It is, I'm, so Dan is saying the fifth, Wednesday, the fifth, I was suggesting the twelfth.
I don't mind going to two meetings, two nights in a row.
David?
It's pretty hard on staff.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good point.
Uh, that's, it's, it's, in fact, we were, we were appreciating the fourth Wednesday, the fourth week of the month.
Keep it the fourth Wednesday?
Do you want to keep it the fourth Wednesday, Don?
Would that work?
Or move it to the fourth?
That would be best for us, because it gives us a week after city council, um. But there's always room for special meetings, and especially one topic, special meeting, so.
Right.
I thought Jackie was gonna say Saturday morning at nine, you know.
No, I didn't do that, do you want to do? But can we have a special meeting on a Saturday, just to get?
Um, special meeting, it's setting our notice, yeah.
Just add on on the food trucks.
I think what what I, what about the fit, when a special meeting on Wednesday the fifth?
And we can do that on this topic, if John's comfortable, if he has time to turn it around and get it back to people.
Yes. Yeah.
What say you, John, do, does Wednesday, June fifth, sound like a reasonable? Time to consider, to review your changes and real fast and just say thumbs up, thumbs down, or whatever?
We could make that work.
Okay.
Thank you very much, John, we appreciate that.
Of course.
We really appreciate that, John.
Thank you, John.
That way we can get it to the council the following week.
Oh, that'd be terrific, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and then, so that would shift our regu, but our regular meetings would then shift to the. Wednesday, the fourth Wednesday, which would be the twenty sixth.
Okay.
Um, we we also offered to the council uh, for the fifth to be a a budget, budget workshop. That would be in the evening also, rather than Saturday, the eighth. Um, so I I don't know, we couldn't do both at the same, well, we could do five and five thirty or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's at six.
At six, okay, so the city council's gonna have a, we're trying to schedule a budget workshop on June fifth.
Oh.
Because I'm out uh, the week of the tenth, I have a graduation and a and a national gymnastics tournament to attend.
Okay.
So I've gotta get my budget ready for the council on the eighteenth, so.
So is, so we're talking then six PM on the Wednesday, the fifth?
No, the question meeting's at six, but if we met at five thirty and we just got out of here.
Yeah, we could do that.
You could do that.
Yeah.
It's not gonna take but a minute, we're just reviewing changes.
Yeah.
The fifth on five thirty.
Right.
And then, and then hopefully. Twenty six will be regular time.
Ongoing, well, five thirty also.
Five thirty also. Right.
From now on.
Twenty six.
From now, from now on, let me see if I have this track, from now on, it's gonna be the fourth Wednesday of every month at five thirty, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Um, let's see. So do we need to take public comment on that? We should take any public comment. I don't see any public comments, so uh. Do we need to have a formal vote?
Sure.
It's an action item, right?
John is shaking his head, no, I don't think so, not yet.
To change, on the change, changes of date and time?
Oh, I'm sorry. I would say yes to that.
Yeah, I thought you would, I thought you would, so so therefore I make a motion that from. He- here on, uh, the UGB committee meets on the fourth Wednesday of every month at five thirty PM in these chambers.
Wait a second. And all in favor, say aye.
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 I'm allowed to vote, right?
Yes, you're allowed to vote.
Okay, that's true. I didn't want.
That was a unanimous, Chad, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I am coming from Gilroy, so hopefully I won't get a speeding ticket.
I had to drive out to Slain's today, and it's a one lane twice, oh my god. Sam's battery died in his car, and it's just like, oh, gosh.
Okay, so it looks like that our next uh, regular meeting is now scheduled for. Wednesday, June twenty sixth. Uh. And I am, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it is now. Is now five oh two? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, talk, talk to you later.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John, very, very much.
Thank you.
Hey, John, if you come to a meeting, I'll get you a pizza.
Bye bye.
Yeah, goodbye.
That's it, you got that, Chad, great meeting, Chad.